Okay, good evening. Before we start this meeting, I'd like to welcome Greg Foster, City of Milton firefighter, to lead us in an invocation.
Thanks again for allowing me this opportunity. I appreciate it. It means the world to me. So let's bow our heads, let's pray. Father, we come before you this evening, and we thank you, God, for this opportunity to just step before you and call upon your name and to just ask your blessings, God, upon this house, that you just begin to lead, God, and direct the steps that we take, the thoughts that we think. Help us to remember, God, that it's really not about us, it's about those whom we serve and that that we do for you that will ultimately make the difference in the end. Pray favor. Just ask tonight, God, that you'd lead, God, again, and direct all that we do. Pray, God, that you'd just continue to bind this council together with cords that can't be broken, that they would be unified, Father, for the benefit of the city and for the people that they serve. Pray your blessings upon all that they do. Just continue to keep us safe, lead, God, and direct our steps and our thoughts, we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Greg. Will the city clerk please call a roll and make the general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 9th, 2010 special call meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. That's a correction on August 16th, regular call meeting. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you'll expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longory is on his way. Councilmember Alan Tartt.
Here.
Would everyone please rise with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. The city clerk, please call the first item.
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 10-1206.
Mayor, I've got two things for you to consider tonight during this. Item one, staff would recommend that we administratively defer RZ 10-04, which is approval to amend the city of Milton's zoning ordinance to create a required distance for convenient storage service stations for residential uses. It would go to September the 8th, first presentation work session on September the 13th, and then be heard of the zoning agenda on September 20th. It's before the planning commission on August 20th. I'd also recommend that you just remove from the agenda item number 10-1216, which is approval of resolution on sales tax for regional transportation.
Okay. And just the reason I've asked to take that resolution off is we're going to, the North Fulton mayor's going to meet again and discuss with transportation officials maybe some different wordings, and we'll bring them back.
Chris, could you repeat those dates again, if you don't mind, for the...
RZ 10-04, September 8th, first presentation work session 13th, and zoning agenda September 20th.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other items to be considered? Okay, do I have a motion, second?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as recommended by staff.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. And I just want to ask, can everybody in the audience hear me? All right? I know we talked about last meeting, and okay. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir, we have one from Ms. Patty Silva.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I'm Patty Silva, 1685 High Grove Club Drive, Milton, Georgia. Though sometimes I really feel like my name is Lucy. As you may recall, several months ago, I stood here before you all to tell you about the most outstanding job of one of our public safety department, actually all of them, but most especially about Officer Justin Wong. Well, as things normally go for me here in the wonderful town of Milton, I did finally get the opportunity to meet Officer Wong while running down the street in my pajamas the other night. That was not the best of looks, but it was just another normal, funny story for me. And anyway, I thought I would start with a bit of humor here. But the circumstances of my meeting Officer Wong in my pajamas was not pleasant, even if it is funny now looking back. Officer Wong came to help, to serve and protect. What really brought it home like none other was that he came to do that in my own neighborhood one week ago. We had a four-alarm fire, I think that's what you call it, but there were at least seven to eight fire engines and trucks. Alfreda and Milton working side by side to fight the flames. It was very, very bad. What was very, very good is that my friends moving into that home from Florida were not moving in until five days later. You are lucky that I did not have all of your cellphone numbers, because my panic was so big and my peace even bigger all at the same time at what I witnessed firsthand, the fire and the firefighters. Mayor Lockwood is the only one I call, and I guess I'd like to publicly say, I'm sorry, Joe, that I called you like that, but I also want to publicly acknowledge that I can't imagine living anywhere else on the planet where I would know the mayor of my town, much less have his phone number, much less feel as if I could call him like that. And that's the most beautiful part of my story, right there to me. If I were still writing about Milton like I did for many years, I would have told this story by now, and you can probably figure out that all I'd be doing is telling the story of these guys and women that don't have a name with a face like they do to me. You already know how much I value these people you hire to look after us, and to all of you, I say thank you for looking out for all of us, which brings me to my next point. I'm here tonight to share my concern over the media coverage of Milton, and I'm concerned about two things. One, that our city has highlighted in the news with the best of intention and in the most positive light. I am concerned that when anyone across the country, or the world for that matter, when they Google the word Milton, what exactly are they reading about Milton and its citizens? I realize we cannot control others and what news they choose to highlight or write about for all to see. On that note comes my second point, which is of most concern to me, especially after a recent event in my own circle. I am asking that you help me if there is any way to do this. Bottom line, I do not want to see any information posted in these media outlets under crime blotter, news receptions, and local newspapers that pertain to any Milton citizen regarding DUI and drug arrests. Why I'm most concerned about this is because I know that there are teenagers and young adults who make mistakes. We all do. I find it horrifying, even if it's a fact of life, that most news is made via arrests and crimes, and often these are printed for the world to see before some of these people get their say in a court of law. I may not be 100% accurate on this, and I apologize, but even if one citizen is harmed by it, it would be devastating to me. As you may recall, over a year or two ago, I came before you all to comment, I have time, about the 18-by-four-foot banner that was held by protesters in one of our main crossroads in order to shame one of our citizens. At that time, my fear was that my children or my children's friends, but mostly the children of the one with the name on the sign, would see this horrible thing from the windows of the school bus on their way home. I made that comment to protect those children of my own from seeing such a sign in our city, and I felt as if you really heard me, as I always do, when I come before you and look into your eyes. So now, as I look into your eyes, I ask you all this. What if a young adult saw their name printed in the news about their mistake? What might happen if this person were extremely fragile emotionally? What if the embarrassment of their poor judgment being printed for all their peers and family to read about puts them over the edge? What if someone were to take their own life because of this? Is it just punishment in all circumstances to print this? I do not think so. It's perfectly legal, but is it okay with you not to say anything? It is not for me anymore. I have to say something. I don't want to specifically name news outlets or individuals who do this. The ones that print these alleged crimes or police activity in Milton on a weekly basis...
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Anyway, they do what they do, and I understand why they do it, but human nature makes us interested. We want to see if we know any of those who messed up. I guess my point tonight is that I find this potentially causes more harm than good, and if it does this, causes pain even to one citizen that the city of Milton tries to protect from harm on our streets and in our neighborhoods, then I would just ask that everyone consider how this news affects the community. How can we help convince our local news to be more responsible for the well-being of all of our citizens, young, old, and everyone in between? How can you help me help them understand that this is not making our city the healthiest and happiest place to live and love in Georgia or in the country? I'm not sure if you can help, but I do hope, help by my coming here tonight to state my concern in a very public forum. I would hope that I can make a difference on behalf of even one young man who I know is very fragile. But unfortunately, there are many more just like him, and I do not know who they are. I do not want to know who they are by reading about them. I want to know who they are because I want them to know I care about them, and we all should. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. See if we'll just move on to the consent agenda. The city clerk, please sound those items.
First item is approval of the August 2nd, 2010 regular council meeting minutes. This is agenda item number 10-1207. Next item is approval of the August 9th, 2010 special call meeting minutes, agenda item number 10-1208. Our last consent agenda item is approval of financial statements for a period ending July 2010, agenda item number 10-1210.
Okay, do I have a motion, a second on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I move to approve the consent agenda, it's presented by staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, second, and by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And just for the record, Suti, do you have it? Councilmember Longora is present. Okay, there's no items under reports and presentation, so I'm going to move on to the first presentation and the public hearings. Will the city clerk please sound those items?
Approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt the fiscal 2011 budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is agenda item number 10-1211.
Mayor, before we get started with this, I just want to ask a question, I guess, of council. I've looked at what we have tonight with respect to public comment, unless we don't have anybody who signed up to speak on this item. We do need to have a public hearing, and I just want to gauge how in-depth of a presentation you all want tonight, knowing again that we're going to have this in front of us several more times. I recognize a lady in the audience, and I see they're here to speak on a different agenda. Are you okay with an abbreviated presentation tonight? And there'll be plenty of other opportunity for me to fill this discussion.
Look, there's others. I would be. What's the rest of the council? Okay with that?
Okay. Great.
The budget that's presented before you is a little bit revised from what was presented in the agenda packet. The numbers haven't really changed much because there really isn't that much more revenue sources available, but the allocation of how it is is going to change as we go through the budget before it is approved. The total amount of the general fund budget is $17,396,743, and that is a balanced budget that is presented to you. We will have another work session on August 23rd, and the approval of the budget will be September 8th, in which time you'll have plenty, ample opportunity to go through and make suggestions on how we actually allocate those funds. The budget itself is based on three financial factors: sustainability of existing services, enhancement of services through operating initiatives, and maintaining the quality of life for constituents, citizens, and businesses through capital programming. Within the general fund operating budget, there are several initiatives that we presented to you last week, just highlighting a few of those initiatives. Within the finance department, there's an initiative of hiring a financial consultant. In the, sorry, in the human resource department, there's an initiative of hiring of actually purchasing and maintaining an HR information system. We've not had one of those before in the past, and this is something that we desperately need. We've been kind of keeping up with everything on spreadsheets or within the payroll software that we have right now, and that's just not really a way of being professional and maintaining the quality applicant pool and maintaining all of the employees' records and everything. So we do recognize there is a need there to include that in the budget. Within the police budget, there are several initiatives: hiring of one police officer to increase the level of service and meet the needs of the city and professional standards based on call volume; bring the two captains that we have up to the same pay scale as the fire battalion chief to create the parity within the departments; purchasing software slash hardware to allow detectives to access crucial data information from cell phones; and instituting a health and wellness program. Within the fire department, you will also see the instituting of the health and wellness...
Suti, one second. Stacy, and David, maybe if you can check, hear from the audience if they can't hear.
Still can't hear Stacy.
Correct.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Let me swallow it. How's that? A little better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Sorry, and I also have a cold, so speaking loud isn't really my forte right now. Within the fire department, there's an incentive pay for firefighters that have a paramedic certification, instituting a health and wellness program, as I just mentioned, purchasing a hydrant marker system, upgrading the battalion command vehicle to be more functional, purchasing supplies to perform annual fire hydrant maintenance that was previously provided by Fulton County Water Authority, purchasing Class A uniforms for command staff, and purchasing chargers and spare batteries for the portable radios so that they won't go out whenever they're on a long call. Within the Parks and Recreation Department, there's two, three initiatives: hiring a recreation program coordinator, hiring part-time directors, lead counselors, and counselors for summer camps, and purchasing supplies for two new camps, mild disability summer camp and summer day camp at Bethwell. Trying to make this as brief as possible. Lastly, we looked at funding capital assets, and the total amount of the capital program is $4,36,521. Within that, we are continuing on several different capital programs that we've currently been doing, which is payment management, gravel roads maintenance, stormwater maintenance, things like that. There are a few new, well, a few new requests within this budget. You all see funding, I believe that we went over that. Purchasing four advanced life support drug boxes. Starting some intersection improvements, or at least the design of intersection improvements at two intersections, Bethany-Cogburn intersection, as well as Hopewell-Francis-Cogburn intersection. Purchasing an SCBA Cascade trailer, I believe Chris touched on the importance of that at the last meeting. Starting city hall design, updating the Crab Apple Master Plan, doing computer refreshes, purchasing a new vehicle for the new police officer, continuing to fund vehicle reserves, relocating the public works yard, TDR feasibility study, highway nine master plan, LCI study, Georgia Urban Forestry Grant Program, and various other park capital improvement projects. There are other funds that aren't mentioned in the, I guess, in the budget letter that I presented to you. Other funds that we have are certain special revenue funds, such as the Special Events Fund. This event was created to account for the expense of our special events within the city that the city hosts or sponsors throughout the year. The total amount of this budget is $49,500, and most of the funding comes from hotel motel excise tax. There's also funding that come from donations, sponsors, and vendor registration fees. We have also an emergency 911 fund. This fund collects, accounts for the collection and expenditure of the wireless 911 fees. These fees are required to be spent solely on the operation of a 911 center, and the city contracts with Alfreda for this service. Total amount of revenue or total amount of revenue and expenditures amounts to $700,000. The operating grant fund is used to account for certain budgeted items that receive funding from individual grants that aren't classified as capital. Currently, there's one grant funded item, the Department of Homeland Security Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safe Grant. This is a reimbursement-type grant where requests are submitted quarterly for the salaries and benefits of three firefighters. This program started on June 21st, 2008, and will continue until June 21st, 2013. The federal match is on a diminishing scale that started at 90% of the first year. It went to 80% in the second year, and down to 50% in the third year, 30% in the fourth, and zero in the fifth. We've also appropriated a small amount to fund the matching requirements for the GCDD mini block grant. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. The total budget for the operating grant fund is $131,503. The hotel motel tax fund is used to account for the excise tax revenues that we receive from our one hotel within Milton, and those monies are 30, we're projecting about $35,000 for next year, and all of that will get transferred over into the Special Events Fund. And lastly, there's the confiscated assets fund. This account, this fund accounts for the assets that have been seized by the Drug Task Force, and these funds can only be used for a specific purpose as outlined by state law. Currently, we are projecting an expenditure of a previously seized funds in the amount of $27,209. That's pretty much what I have to present tonight. We will certainly go in great more detail at the work session next Monday.
Do we have any questions for Stacy right now?
I don't think you can, Mayor. I think we need to take the public hearing and just go on to just those first presentations.
Okay, and we, there's no public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion. I would put forward a motion to approve the first presentation of first public hearing of the ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia to adopt fiscal 2011 budget for each fund for the city of Milton, and as stated in our agenda, specifically agenda item number 10-1211.
Second motion. Yeah, I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Lusk. Before we vote on this, I want to make sure, I may need you to close this hearing before we vote on that. Is that, so I'm going to close this hearing now, and then I've got a motion by Councilmember Bailey and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Will the city clerk please read the next public hearing item? And Chris, if you don't mind, explaining the process of both. We've got it here, but then also later in our meeting for our people in the audience.
The next item is approval for the removal of Billy Lovelace Holling from the list of approved solid waste haulers for the city of Milton due to noncompliance with the ordinance. This is agenda item number 10-1140. Public hearing was deferred on May 17th, also deferred on June 21st, and that would be Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, I'll start this one. We certainly have Matt here if we need to supplement it. Let me just kind of walk us through what the process is going to be tonight. We have two public hearings in the agenda, both of them also come up later on the agenda at another point. So during the public hearing portion, we will truly conduct a public hearing, and then close the public hearing when we're done and move on. There won't be any votes taken at this portion of the meeting. I would foresee that we will describe for you all why we have these items on the agenda tonight, particularly this first one, and I'll start with that presentation as to why staff, if you feel it's important to bring this to your attention. Certainly then, we will be willing to hear anybody who's here to speak in favor and opposition of our action tonight, of potential action, and then we'll close it and move on, and we'll come back to this at later point. Probably we will have a lot less presentation later than late because it's all going to get on the table, really, at this point, if that's okay. Let me start with this one and say that this has been something that we have had in front of you before. We've deferred it a couple of different times. We've deferred it most recently on June the 21st with the direction that we work as hard as we could to bring this particular hauler into compliance with our ordinance. I guess I'll start with the bright spot at this point, and that is that we've had at least a plan presented to the city, albeit, and I think they would admit to the fact that that was a very late in the game plan, and we're talking as, you know, the end of last week before we had any, anything in front of us. I don't know necessarily that our staff recommendation changes tonight based on that, but that will be for you all to decide ultimately what happens. We have had a difficult time bringing this particular hauler into compliance with our ordinance, and as I sit here tonight, I can tell you that we're still not in compliance with the ordinance. There might be a plan in place to get us into compliance with it, but it's truly not there. I can tell you that staff has spent an extraordinary amount of time trying to bring this hauler into compliance. Staff has responded to a hand, more than a handful, more than two handfuls of complaints from Milton citizens about the nonresponsiveness of this hauler missed pickups and telephone calls. It seems as though between June 21st, I guess if I could characterize it, somewhere in the neighborhood of, gosh, more than 20 phone calls have been received by the city with displeasure for the responsiveness of this particular hauler question, kind of, or the statement kind of goes, sometimes if they're not going to pick up my trash, why are they even on your list? And that's kind of where we are tonight. We are more than two and a half, I want to say, it's more than two, probably not quite two and a half years, inter years in infrastructure maintenance fees that are required for the haulers to pay. Frankly, I have a hard time, and I think at some point we have to bring this forward to you and take some action, because it's very difficult to cause the other haulers to be in compliance with an ordinance if we simply are allowing one not to be. I guess just so I can read into the record of the public hearing, the reasons by which staff is recommending the revocation of the nonexclusive solid waste management contract is Billy Lovelace Holling is therefore requested on following grounds. Number one, on regular complaints far exceeding any other hauler, and the fact that no change in consistency of pickup appears to have occurred since the last council meeting. Promises of late pickup after missing the first day of trash that often don't occur as promised. Communication up until Friday still remains poor. Communication has been almost nonexistent from the city's perspective from June the 21st to August the 3rd, only one email from the company to the city regarding repayment invoices, et cetera. Many of the complainants have stated that their neighbor's trash is also sitting around waiting for this hauler to pick it up, and won't even question the health-related hazard of this, and finally, that the company has yet been able to, or yet been unable to identify all their gross receipts for the past two years on which the fee is based, therefore no progress is made on establishing a repayment plan. As of this point, that's kind of the basis by which we feel that this hauler is not in compliance with the ordinance, and look for your direction as to whether or not you want to allow this hauler to continue servicing the city of Milton.
Okay.
I think probably we'd be best to hear from anybody speaking in favor and opposition, and then if you have any questions, it may be Matt or anybody.
Let's open up to public, public comment. So I would say those in favor would be asked to speak first.
We have two comments and support, none in opposition. The first speaker will be Kylie Wright.
My name is Kylie Wright. I'm a resident at 8107 River Ridge Drive in Canton, Georgia. First of all, I want to start off by saying I've been with Billy Lovelace Garbage and Holling since February. As far as the past due amounts, I had a hard time coming up with the records, simply because the computer that had all the information on it is no longer in existence. It doesn't work. I have been, I have met with Matt Marietta, that was after the June 21st meeting, and I have spoke to him through email as well as phone a couple of different times. I know that we have had problems. I don't deny that we've had problems. Since then, we have done quite a bit of things to get... Since then, we have done quite a bit of things to get in ordinance, and we've converted our form of primary communication with our customers from phone to email. This will be the method used to relay any necessary information to all accordingly. We will eventually convert our billing process over this way as well. Rearrange our current weekly routes in order to even out the number of pickups daily. Better our current service truck and complete all mechanical work it has undergone. Continue working on the second service truck we recently purchased so that it is in compliance with the City of Milton's current ordinance by having it properly labeled, covered, and registered accordingly. Work out an appropriate payment plan to resolve the outstanding maintenance fees that are due. Keep all lines of communication open with the city and report all progress made. Provide the city with all contact information for our company and meet all guidelines of the city ordinance so we can continue our service with the City of Milton and its residents. We have acquired a new employee who we recently hired, and he will soon possess the knowledge needed to run current routes independently. In the event Billy is unable to run the routes himself, we are no longer faced with the issues of customers being prolonged service. We hope that the city council will find that our efforts and our reconstruction plan given will be sufficient to continue our service in the outstanding City of Milton. And this particular letter I sent to Matt Marietta back in July, and I had asked him to forward it to the city council members, and at this point, I am assuming that that was never done. I did send out an email today as well. Basically, as far as the, the fees that are due, as I stated before, it was hard for me to come up with the exact numbers, having the computers. I had to go through all the payments, I had to go through the dates, I had to figure out what was paid, I had to figure out who was in the City of Milton, how much tax they paid, add it all up, and in addition to, we did have problems with the work trucks and things of that nature, being in response to phone calls and all the other duties that are necessary. It did take me quite a bit of time. However, I have come up with the total that is due, starting with the third quarter of '08 to this first quarter of 2010. The total amount due is $4,909.31. I spoke with Matt Marietta, who relayed to me that we were allowed a 12-month payment plan. So that basically puts our payments at $409.11 per month, which I do have a check for as well. So not only am I a employee of Billy's, I'm also an investor. I have been with him since February with the company, and I know that he's put a lot, he's put eight years, I believe so, in the City of Milton. Out of eight years, seven years he went with not one complaint. This last year has been bad, and basically it was due to the truck issue. But as I stated, we do have a second service truck, we have a, another worker, so I am very confident that these issues will be resolved very promptly if we are allowed the opportunity.
Our next comment comes from Brett Cole.
Hello, council. My name's Brett Cole. I live at 2310 Hope Hall Plantation Drive. And I'm just here only because I've had Billy Lovelace, since I moved to Milton six years ago, I've had Billy Lovelace as my pickup person. This past year, I've had major problems like everyone else has with Billy. I work for a family-owned business. Personally, I believe in family-owned businesses, I believe in entrepreneurship. I know working for a family-owned business, we have major hiccups within our company in the software technology, but on the other hand, I believe in trying to support the family-owned business and the small guy that's out there trying to make a difference and support his family. What I'm saying is in terms of what's, you know, pickup issues, I've had the pickup issues too, don't get me wrong. But on the other hand, for the past six years, I've never had an issue until this past year. I've been patient, I've called Kylie numerous, numerous times since February when I wasn't getting picked up. She always returned my phone call. With that, I feel good that there's a payment plan in place, because obviously, like everyone else here, everyone should be paying their, you know, fair dues and taxes, and I feel comfortable about that. But in terms of supporting a smaller company, that's my belief. As a customer, and just like all of you, we all have the same issues, whether it's with your cell service, whether it's with your TV service, whether it's the department stores, whether it's your landscape or whatever, everyone has a choice. I don't think the City of Milton should be making a choice whether you get rid of a particular vendor just because people are unhappy with them. Fire them. That's what I do. I've done it for the past 40 years or 50 years when I'm unhappy with someone. I don't have someone dictating to me, I don't have the government dictating to me who's going to stay, who's going to go. If I'm unhappy, I go with someone that I want for better service. Now, we're spot, talking to small person here, I'm talking about the major corporations. So we're looking a little different situation in that regards. I've been patient for the past probably month and a half, I've been picked up every week. I've met Billy twice in six years, I think it is, and to be honest with you, I don't want to be up out of four or five in the morning saying hi to him, but my garbage has been picked up. As it was brought up earlier regarding payments and, you know, money, do their, you know, the City of Milton do money, my concern to the City of Council right now is who's out there, who's out there picking up trash, which there are, at least one other vendor is picking up trash that's not even on your list. So how is the council handling that situation? Because there is someone out there picking up trash, you know, and, you know, not including everyone else that's out there doing services for the City of Milton that they're not even paying anything. I think the City of, City of Milton needs to look at some sort of structure, some sort of way of trying to figure out exactly how much money we're losing as a whole by people not even being authorized by the City of Milton. And there are issues out there. So I think that's something else that needs to be looked at, not only this issue, at least this issue's coming forward, they want a payment plan, they're trying to get service back on track. Obviously, they have their payments, it's the city's choice, you know, to have them, you know, ousted from the City of Milton. But as long as they're, you know, paying, and I have a choice, I would prefer to stay with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comment?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay, then we'll close this.
Mr. Mayor, before you close, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Ms. Wright, could I trouble you to come back up very quickly? Ms. Wright, I just want to confirm before we close at the public hearing, are you the duly authorized representative of Billy Lovelace Holling to be here this evening?
Yes, I am.
And you were given advance notice of this hearing this evening?
Yes, I was.
And did, were you provided, or was Billy Lovelace provided, a list of the, of the bullet points that Mr. Lagerblum went over as far as the concerns?
Not directly, not by mail or email. I was informed just to pull up the City of Milton, go over the ordinance, and I kind of was highlighted throughout my meeting with Matt back in June, areas that needed to be worked upon.
So did anything that Mr. Lagerblum said strike you as unusual or unexpected?
Yes, it did. Just the fact, I mean, I, I spoke with Chris on Friday, and I think that maybe we were on a different page. He basically had stated that all form of communication was lost. And I have been speaking with Matt Marietta. I've, I've met with him back in June, I've spoke with him on the phone, and we have corresponded with emails. Granted, it hasn't been a lot of communication, I don't deny that. I have spoke with him, though, and just also, I want to throw out there, I'm more than willing to, on a monthly basis, if need be, meet with Matt, just so he is up to par. That way, no one feels like they're, you know, left out, they don't know what's going on, to report progress and, you know, make advancements for the company.
Other than the, your statement with respect to the amount of contact you all have been having with the City of Milton, did the other underlying concerns, you had heard those before?
Yes.
And have you had an opportunity, is there anything you'd like to express to the council this evening that you've not had a chance to say yet, anything in addition?
Other than, as far as the complaints, you know, I'm getting them before you guys are getting them, or before they, they receive them. And up until about five weeks ago, we were doing a lot better on time. I know that there has been the problems, but we are currently on schedule. Billy is not here himself because he is out working to stay on schedule. He didn't want to be here, but thought it was a much better idea to be out working and make sure that everyone was taken care of so we don't fall behind again.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on this item, and then again, we'll be discussing that further into our meeting. Will the city clerk please read the next public hearing item?
Next item is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year 2010 and for other purposes. This is Agenda Item Number 101204. First presentation was heard on August 9th, 2010. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening again. The total tax digest that we currently have is a little over $2.1 billion, and that is before you take into account what we're going to apply the millage rate to. When you apply the millage rate at 4.731 mils, which is what we're presenting to you tonight to be approved, the total taxes that will be levied is a little over one point, I'm sorry, 9.5 million. That includes personal property, real property, and motor vehicle taxes. Just in property taxes alone, we're looking at 9.1 million dollars. Motor vehicle taxes, $478,000. There's a total decrease of 3.67% over last year's tax digest. We are operating, we will be operating under a temporary collection order again this year for the third year in a row. This, they, they still have not gotten the 2008 digest approved. Not entirely sure if there was any major problems with the 2010 digest, but because they have not gotten the 2008 digest certified by the state, they had to go through a temporary collection order for 2010. So this is still a proposed tax digest, it's not in concrete, it's not been certified by the state. The tax bills are projected to be mailed between September 1st through September 15th, depending on how soon we can get them, get them implemented into our new financial software. We're trying to push the software implementation schedule up so we can get the tax bills out by September 1st. The due date will be 60 days afterwards, so if it's September 1 bill date, they'll be due on October 31st. Again, we're presenting a 4.731 mils. This is the same as we've had for the past three years. So I don't have any further public information or public hearing, other than this, just saying that this is a decrease. We are only, we're not even required to hold a public hearing, but we did want to give the citizens a chance to comment or respond to the millage rate if they wish to do so. This, we will be presenting this later on within the agenda for approval.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and we'll address the council later in the meeting. Okay, let's move on to the zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the zoning rules and call the next item?
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits and associated concurrent variances in additions to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, and the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk staff will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The planning commission heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during the meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Department of Community Development, to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government, official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respected local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. The violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member, and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning agenda item is RZ 10-02, to delete or amend the following sections of the City of Milton zoning ordinance to be consistent with the City of Milton telecommunications ordinance. Number one, section 64 through 74, nonconforming lots, uses and structures. Two, section 64 through 1097, miscellaneous provisions of the state Route 9 overlay district. Three, section 64 through 1592, alternative antenna support structure to exceed the district height. Four, section 64 through 1594, antenna tower and associated structures, radio, TV, microwave, broadcasting, et cetera, to exceed the district height, 0-I, C-1, M-1A, M-1, and M-2. Five, section 64 through 1801, antenna tower and associated structure, radio, TV, microwave, broadcasting, et cetera, to exceed the district height, residential districts, mix, and AG1. This is Agenda Item Number 101197. First presentation was heard on August 2nd, 2010. Ms. Lynn Tully.
As you all may remember, what the staff has attempted to do here is simply clean up our zoning text so that it matches our newly adopted telecommunications ordinance. Where there are conflicts, it removes those conflicts, such that the telecommunications ordinance takes precedence. In going through each of these sections, I'll start with the first one, section 6474, nonconforming lots. Basically, this portion of the section should be deleted because it's addressed in the telecommunications ordinance. Number two, section 64-1097, miscellaneous provisions of the state Route 9 overlay district. Again, a majority of this should be deleted, however, there's a section regarding requirement for stealth design in the Highway 9 overlay district, and we felt like since that was an overlay district that, and an aesthetic requirement, that that should remain within that overlay district. Staff, further notes, the planning commission did recommend changing the reference to, from cell towers to wireless communication, telecommunications towers to be consistent with the telecommunications ordinance. Number three, section 64-1592, alternative antenna, antenna support structure to exceed the district height. Again, this section should be deleted because all towers and support structures are addressed within the telecommunications ordinance. Number four, section 641594, similarly, this entire section should be deleted as it's addressed in the telecommunications ordinance. And number five, section 64-1801, antenna tower and associated structures to exceed the district height. Again, this section should be deleted because it's addressed within the telecommunications ordinance that we recently passed. Do you all have any questions?
Do we have any questions? We don't have any comments on this, do we?
No, sir.
Public comment? Okay. We'll close the hearing if we don't have any questions, and open it up to council discussion. There's no questions, discussions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 101197, as written in the agenda.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, a second by Councilmember Tark. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, city clerk, please say on the next item.
Our second zoning agenda item is RZ 10-03, to amend section 64-1606A of the City of Milton zoning ordinance, roadside produce stands to include mix, mixed use. Agenda Item Number 101198. First presentation was on August 2nd, 2010. Ms. Lynn Tully.
Not to be redundant, but this is pretty much exactly how it reads in the agenda. We are simply adding MIx to the available zoning districts for farmers' markets and specifically for roadside produce stands. That's the only change that we're proposing at this time. I know that the council has requested we look into adding additional length of time, and that'll come back to you, assuming that- and that'll come back to you, assuming that there is consensus upon the council. That'll come back to you at separate work session.
Okay, do you have any questions? No public comment, I assume?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I'll close this hearing and open it up to council discussion. And if there's no questions or discussion, I'll ask for a motion, a second on it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 10-03, Agenda Item 101198.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Tarr, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City, if you'd sound the next item, please.
Our final zoning item, RZ 1004, was administratively deferred by motion vote.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Please sound the next item.
Next item is approval for the removal of Billy Lovelace Holling from the list of approved solid waste haulers for the City of Milton due to non-compliance with the ordinance. This is Agenda Item Number 101140. Public hearing deferred on May 17th, again on June 21st. Public hearing was held on August 16th. Mr. Matt Marianna.
Mayor, Matt's here. I'm here. We've made this presentation. We've certainly been able to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, at this point, I'll ask, does council have any questions for staff on this item? Alan, we'll start with Alan and move down.
I have several questions. Thank you, Mayor. My first question has to do with, Ms. Wright, you said that Mr. Lovelace is picking up trash right now. Is he picking up trash in the City of Milton?
Last I checked, I haven't spoken with him.
I spoke with him about 5:30, and he was finishing up. And to my knowledge, yes, he was in the City of Milton.
Okay. I may have some more questions for you. There was a, Ms. Wright referenced a 490931 in the amount that they feel that's due. What I'm having some confusion on is when was the last time they paid fees?
Let me bring Matt up so he can address that. Well, Matt's coming up. He can answer when the last time they paid fees. The way fees are calculated is a percentage of collection, so that's why it's terribly important that the company know what to remit based on their collections, which is why we've had a problem here, is that we don't know, or they can't tell us what kind of business they've done because of this computer that doesn't work anymore. So that's partly what's been the hole up here, but Matt, you can elaborate on where they are.
The last piece we collected were June of 2008.
Okay, so this alleged computer that's been broken, has been broken since 2008. We've been able to recover data for going on over two years. Okay. One other thing, there was a claim made by a citizen that there are other vendors in the city that are operating either illegally because they aren't on the approved list or they are perhaps not paying any fees. Could staff speak to that claim? And if that is the case, what are we doing about it to make sure that we're treating everybody fairly?
That's correct. The enforcement of this ordinance kind of comes in two ways. One, it enforces those that are on the, it enforces compliance with those that are on the list to make sure that they are in conformance with the ordinance. But secondarily, it tries to enforce those that aren't on the list by either bringing them into compliance or ceasing their activity in the City of Milton. So yes, it's two different ways to enforce the same ordinance. Certainly, if there's information, see, I was behind somebody about two weeks ago who I saw throw a bunch of trash in the back of the truck, and it said for service, call this number. Well, by gosh, I called to find out who that was, who was picking up trash in Milton. Sometimes it's as crazy as just happening to be behind somebody when you see an activity happen. But if there's information that somebody wants to present to us that shows that there's somebody picking up in Milton that we need to track down, that's the way we generate a lot of those good leads to be able to go out and find them. So yeah, two different mechanisms, same ordinance, but we certainly don't endorse that either.
Okay.
I would just add to that, too. You know, if there are people and you get tips or whatever, I know there's some that staff is working on right now with to get them in compliance, or in fact, I made a phone call today to try to help, you know, track some down, so.
I got a couple more questions and I'll wrap it up. It appears as though that this lack of compliance has been noted going as far back as four months or more. And apparently, supposedly, there was a letter that was sent to staff in July that was to be forwarded to us. I don't know if I got that letter. Was there a letter sent to you that was, that detailed the corrective action plan that was just sent to us recently?
The first time that, actually, the second time this was on the agenda, which would have been the last council meeting when y'all voted to defer it, Billy Lovelace Incorporated was supposed to have a representative here. That representative didn't show up until after the hearing. It was already deferred by us. At that time, I was provided with the letter with the understanding that the rest of the information, including the details about the receipts and so on for the missing, what is it, two years now, would be provided as part of the whole reconstruction package. And at that time, I was, the purpose was to bring that for you to present what their plan for rectifying the problem was. And so I've been in a holding pattern until I received any further information, which I finally got that call last Friday around noon, I believe. And by that point, this agenda had already been published and I'd already drafted my memo. So my recommendation to her was that she go ahead and bring all of her information and whatever her plan is and present it to y'all because it had already moved beyond our timelines as far as being able to publish that properly as part of the package.
Gotcha. All right, well, you know, I believe that the solid waste ordinance provides fairness and equal playing field for all the approved waste haulers in the City of Milton. It's unfair that others are being held accountable and paying the fees that they should pay, in my opinion, since they are operating on our streets and the heavy trucks and whatnot do put our burden on our streets that taxpayers are having to put the bill for to pay for those fees to those fees help offset that. You know, the time to have come forward with the corrective action plan frankly would have been when it was first on our agenda back in May, not the week before. We're hearing it after it was deferred several months. So as far as this council member's position on this, I would agree with staff's recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Joe?
Yeah. Chris?
Yes.
I can understand, you know, issues with not collecting a self-reported fee, all right? If you get lost, you don't know what your receipts were because of whatever reason your computer goes down. I mean, that's understandable for a certain period of time, but certainly 24 months is, it goes beyond any reasonable expectation. Why, why has it taken it this long to get to this point? To me, the only real issue is we haven't been collecting fees from a company that operates on our streets, okay?
Sure.
Why on earth have we waited 24 months to get to this point?
Certainly, that's a fair question, and the best answer I have for you, and you're not going to like it and I don't like it, is that we really didn't have a mechanism by which to enforce this. And we didn't have the mechanism partly because that was not in the scope of service. And I'm so tired of hearing that's not in our scope, I can scream. But that wasn't in the scope of service.
I understand.
It's not in our scope because we have defined our scope.
I understand, I understand. My whole point, Matt, asking that question, is that we can't hold somebody accountable for not paying something. Well, we can't hold them accountable for not paying, but we can't penalize them for our lack of taking action to collect because given two choices to pay or not pay, you know, you're going to pay the person that's persistently asking.
Squeaky wheel.
Okay? Exactly. So, and I can only imagine, being a family-operated business, that they're, you know, addressing the fires that come up on a daily basis, so. And I would happen to agree with the citizen that mentioned this in his discussion about support of Billy Lovelace, is, look, the market decides who is going to be in business. We shouldn't decide who's in business. We should decide who has to pay us based on them wanting to operate. And we've got some challenges in catching those people that operate without our permission. And that goes beyond the scope of potentially what we have available in enforcement in order to manage that side of the equation, but we shouldn't, again, penalize those people who have reported that they're operating in our city limits and allow the people that don't report to just sort of slip away. Now, this particular circumstance is a little bit strange, and it's strange for a whole bunch of reasons, but I would say that if they're ready to start making payments, that we should give them that chance to do that. If they don't keep up the goodwill that we show them, then, you know, they had their chance and that's the end of the story. But we can't keep them from operating because they're not doing a good job. That's not what we're here for. We're here to make sure that they owe up to the letter, the ordinance, and that we've given them ample chance to do that, so. That's the only question I have.
Anybody else? Bill?
Matt, a question, you may not know the answer. Do we know the amount of fees collected from the other haulers in the city? And could we determine with some degree of reasonableness if this $4,900 is close to what we should have collected based on what we think the number of clients he has?
The problem that we're dealing with is at some point between when they stopped paying the fees and now, their customer base has declined drastically. So we, back in June of 2008, the, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but the quarterly fees were over $1,000 for the quarter. And so clearly, we're talking about a little bit of a decline financially in the amount of money they're taking in and therefore the percentage that they're paying as fees. So there's absolutely no way, depending on the customer base and at what rate it declined, to make any fair judgment on the numbers that were being given. The amount isn't consistent with what they were paying before, but based on the complaints that I'm hearing and to your point, Councilman Longoria, they're probably losing their customers based on the volume of complaints that I'm getting, so it is quite likely that the amount that they owe us has gone down over that 24-month period. So I'm inclined to accept that explanation, just based on all the evidence that I have, but I don't have any hard and fast numbers to apply to it to tell you whether or not that's valid.
I understand. And I guess to tag onto what Joe brought up down there, just like any service provider, they survive by matter of choice. Certainly, if Comcast dropped their service, somebody's going to move to DirecTV or one of the other providers. Same way with any other business out here. Certainly, BP station lets you down, people are just going to go over to Shell station. So it's a matter of personal choice, and that's how people, or that's how the consumers really determine who survives and who doesn't out there. But to address his plan here, and his plan to make good on his fees that are in arrears, I think that's an opportunity for us to collect them. And I think what comes to mind is, the analogy that comes to mind is debtor's prison. And if you throw a debtor into prison, how's he going to pay off his debts? Well, if we deny him the ability to make a living here in our city, how is he going to pay off that debt? I guess the question for the city attorney would be, what leverage do we have if he is dropped, if Lovelace is dropped from the city-approved list? Do we have to go after back fees?
We would simply have to bring an action against the entity for debts owed to the city under the ordinance. And that may not be a terribly satisfactory resolution simply because the amount that would cost to take that action may in fact be more than the fees that we would recover if the amounts up here run around are accurate. We, of course, would seek reimbursement for attorney's fees, but then again, of course, we've made this a lot more expensive for everyone, and I don't know whether they can afford to pay those anymore than they can afford to pay the $4,000. That's how we would do it.
Well, and I understand the importance of the laws and ordinances here, that everyone should comply with them, but I feel like any other case, a civil case, went into court, I think a judge would try to allow for restitution, I guess, in the case of, and I see, you know, allowing him to continue here and getting on a payment program is a form of restitution. My thoughts.
Okay. Julie, then Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few thoughts, is that, one, that this seems to be a little bit complicated by some different things. One, it seems to be complicated by the fact that we weren't indeed, because of our prior contract, that we didn't from the beginning really track the ordinance and we weren't tracking all of our haulers. So I do think that complicated this particular situation. I'm pleased that we are now indeed tracking that because I think according to that solid waste ordinance, it's something that we have needed to do, so thank you for those efforts. The communication in this particular instance, you know, we obviously hear a couple of different things depending on who we're hearing from, and that leads me to believe that maybe there's been some, at least positive education through this process, is that Lovelace, as an organization, perhaps understands the importance of communicating now more readily with the city, and that, you know, whatever communication is there, it's important that we're all, you know, apprised of that. I'm pleased that we've at least seen a plan. I think we would all have been more pleased had we seen some action against that plan today. A couple of things, and I think levering both off of Councilmember Lusk as well as Longoria's comments, there's some of the issues that seem to be business management. There seem to be a few of the items that are more ordinance-specific, and this is where I'll ask my question. As an example, I know that we've got some very specific requirements with regards to the trucks. And is it Ms. Wright? And if you don't mind, just real quick, if I'm not mistaken, Matt and Chris, please interject if you get more specifics on this. My recollection of that ordinance is that, especially in trucks, because that speaks to the impact to other citizens, is that not having a covered truck is an issue. And that's not really a business management issue, but I heard you say that you have another vehicle. Can you just speak to what has been done to remedy that situation?
Well, first of all, the current service truck, it was not covered. Since then, you know, it has been fixed. It has a cover that you pull from the front to the back like much of the other compact trucks and whatnot that you see.
And it's a permanent sort of cover? I mean, it's not a temporary?
It's like a, I don't even really know how to describe it, but it has, it's like a mesh cover.
So it has more permanence to it than just a canvas cover?
Right. And it's actually tied on there, and you just roll it. And much of the newer vehicles you see do have those, which is what he installed. As far as the second truck, the second truck was purchased, it was from another sanitation company that's not familiar with within the city limit, but it's both sanitation. We purchased that truck from him, and it has not been in service at this point because it is not up, meeting the code for the city ordinance. It is not covered, it's not properly labeled, and things of that nature. So of course, until those things are completed, which those are the last things that need to be done, it labeled the tar, or the cover on the top of it. Once that's done, then it will meet city ordinance.
And I guess my question, do you have any sense of how soon that second vehicle would be in compliance and able to be put into service?
Well, now that Billy is on schedule and things are a lot smoother, I'm confident that within two weeks, it should be completed. He will have the extra time. Financially, we, obviously, we've lost a lot of customers, so our income has gone down a substantial amount. Therefore, a lot of the mechanical work Billy has to do himself. Since we are on time and our customer has, our customer amount has declined, he will have more opportunities. So I am confident that within two weeks, that it should be completely ready to go and meet the city ordinance.
And the reason for my question on that is just trying to understand of the various things that were out of compliance, which of those are a business management issue versus kind of public health, safety, et cetera? Obviously, the collection of funds is pretty important, and I would be a believer that if we remove the opportunity in the very short term to correct these issues and to continue to have customers, it might be difficult then to collect against the, we're estimating $4,900. And Stacy? And Stacy, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that. Do you feel confident or comfortable, maybe confident's not the right word, are we getting more comfortable that that's the amount due? Or are we still really not know yet?
That's really something that...
It's premature for us.
No, that's what we rely on Matt for.
I didn't know if that was financial, if we were trying to look at that.
I would say Matt's number's good with it.
So, are you relatively comfortable, Matt, that that's getting close to the number?
I'll need to review it. I haven't had checks looked at. Up to this point, I don't have any reason to believe that they're being disingenuous.
Right. So, whether it's $5,000 or $6,000, we think it's at least within the ballpark. And the ordinance does, as we stated by Ms. Wright, it does allow for, I guess, a 12-month or if that's a decision that you guys have made internally?
Well, it is, and that was part of the direction I took from what I asked the council to me. So, that was more a Chris decision was. I heard the council say, work with this hauler, try to bring him into compliance. So, that is, as working with the haulers.
Right. Obviously, you have. And so, for me, the quandary is, I do believe that we need to have haulers that are in compliance. I believe we have a solid waste ordinance for a reason. I do believe that there's been an effort to be fair, given that there have been some complications, as you've conveyed. My tendency is to want to say, you know what, we need to reach out and see if we can't help a family-owned business in the city of Milton, but I think there are also limitations to that. And so, my, perhaps my final question to you, Ms. Wright, would be, based on the plan that we've just seen, which we've received via email just in the last little while, realistically, how long do you believe, give or take, generally speaking, how long do you think it would be before you and Loveless could have that in place?
Well, regarding the, this being on schedule, that's in place currently. As of last week, he, last week, he was completely on time. The week before that, he did get caught up, and everything has been smoothly since. And as I stated before, he's not here currently because he knows the importance of staying on time. Mondays and Tuesdays, they've always been his busiest days for pickup, and simply, if something goes wrong, then Monday, it just, it has a trickle effect. It's going to throw our whole week off. Therefore, the importance of him being out and being on schedule today, obviously, was very important, which is why he was not here. I'm very confident that we have a lot of customers that are satisfied, and those customers who were not satisfied have just simply found another hauler. And as far as the truck goes, it has to be labeled and things that I had just stated. I don't see any reason why two weeks wouldn't be an appropriate time given for those things to be completed. And the other issues, you know, if anyone else has any questions or anything else you want me to cover on, please feel free to ask. But those are the two, and especially with the fees that are due. Now, the computer hasn't been out for 24 months. I came into play in February. For me to go back and figure out what he owed for the first, second, third quarter of 2008, well, I had to rely on that computer in order to do that. That computer actually crashed in June. That's the problem that I had with it.
Trying to reconstruct the forensic.
Right. That's the problem that I ran into. So, I just had to pull up the payments, like I said, and figure out, okay, this was paid then. I had to go from file to file to file. So, we do, I haven't had a chance to share this with Matt. He, you know, suggested I bring it now, but I have the total amount that's due, and per the 12-month payment plan, the payments for 409, which, as I stated before, I am prepared to, you know, make the first payment today.
And just a final couple of thoughts, depending on what the will of this council is, is that I think communication's important, and hopefully, if nothing else, there's been an important message conveyed, that it's important for our small businesses to communicate with the city and vice versa. So, hopefully, that's been a positive outcome of this. I would encourage more of that. My question for our staff is, if a hauler is removed from our list, what, is there a process that allows them to be returned to that list at a particular time? If at some future point, I just, I don't know how we handle that.
I don't know of anything that would preclude them. Other than there's anything that would preclude it, I think that would have to be based on probably demonstrated success somewhere else.
And I guess with that, my thought, my thought would be that maybe we have a defined period of time that says we now have a plan, we need to see performance against that, and whether it's two weeks for one thing, and it's the check tonight, but it very specifically defined results, and that, and that I think that that would be extremely important. And then we say it's either been met or not. So, that would just be my input there this evening. And I do think that the regular communication scheduled in advance, based on Mr. Marietta's schedule, would be pretty helpful.
Yes, and just one more thing, as I stated before, I have no problem with, you know, personally coming in, as long as it allows with Matt's schedule or whoever else's, just come in personally, okay, you know, this is what's going on, here's documentation, the shows, whatever, whatever we need to do to, so you guys are comfortable and know that we are making efforts, we are trying, you know, and we have put this plan in motion, these are the positive outcomes of it, and here's where we stand on a month-to-month basis, or whatever timeframe would be appropriate for Matt, and that you guys may decide, you know, I'm personally more than willing to do myself.
And I'll just say that, I think it's important we're consistent with our ordinance. This just seems to have some peculiarities.
Okay. Karen, I think you.
Yeah. I agree with some of the things that have been said before. I don't think it's our right to tell people who to pick up their trash, but it clearly is our right to make sure everybody who does do it within our city limits is in compliance. So, I think that is the key. Based on that, do you typically bill people quarterly? You bill people monthly? How are most of your customers billed?
We do a three-month payment. So, basically, they pay July, they pay for July, August, and through September, then they would be due again in October. So, we do it on a quarterly basis.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this for six months. Is that possible?
You know, can we let, we got a few more comments, and then...
Oh, okay. I thought I was the last one to make comments.
Well, I want to make a comment, and I think, Bert would like to make a quick comment, but then you're the last one to make a motion.
Okay.
Bert, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, we've talked a lot about if we were to give it another chance here in extended period about, you know, catching up, but I want to make sure that we're in good shape going forward, that, you know, financially viable to not only meet the $409 or whatever it is a month, but also the next quarter's payments and all that kind of stuff. If we watch that, that's my main concern with this.
It's a concern of mine as well, just to be honest with you, but I was told 12 months, so what more?
But I'm talking about this 2010s.
Oh, right.
I mean, what's current, keeping up with the current stuff.
Absolutely.
In addition to what's gone on, you know, in the last couple of years. And I would too be in favor of looking at some sort of probationary period going forward, I guess.
Okay. Well, you know, and I just, a couple of comments wrap it up. First, I want to thank our staff, because they're doing a great job at trying to enforce the ordinances that we have enacted. And this is not the only situation where we have problems, where a lot of these ordinances have been in, or some semblance of them have been enacted years ago with Fulton County, but unfortunately, nobody was enforcing them. So, business like Billy Loveless or several others have not had to follow requirements or no one's been checking up on them. So, all of a sudden, now we've got the city, our staff's doing a good job, so a lot of businesses feel like, well, now we're picked on and all that. So, first off, I want to thank our staff for doing their job of what they're legally supposed to do, and I know it's tough. And I think, you know, as we've all talked, we need to make sure that we support our staff moving forward to at least bring others in compliance and make sure everybody's on a fair playing field. The other thing I want to say is, you know, I certainly respect a small business, I understand the issues. You know, I want to give, it's Kylie Wright.
Yes.
Sorry, I don't remember your last name, but...
Kylie Wright.
Right, Ms. Wright, I want to commend you for, as you've said, you've only been, been there since February, and it sounds like you're trying to fix things, and I'm sure that's a lot on you.
Yes.
To try to recreate, go back, and then also move forward. And again, I'll commend you for just coming up here and presenting this, because I'm sure it's very nerve-wracking and whatnot. So, again, I, you know, thank you for doing that. But again, I'll kind of reflect on what everybody else says. You know, if this applicant feels that they can, you know, get in compliance, if we want to come up with some kind of time limit, I think Councilmember Thurmond was expressing that in a motion, but to allow this, this business to get back on their feet and get right with the city, communicate with Matt, I certainly would support that. So, anyways, moving forward, at that point, I'll just open it up for a motion. I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Councilmember Thurmond?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we defer RZ 10 dash, oops, I'm sorry. No, it's Agenda Item 10-11-40, Approval for the Removal of Billy Loveless Hauling from the List of Approved Solid Waste Haulers for the City of Milton, who are non-compliant with the ordinance for a period of six months, at which time, they will be remitting their monthly payments for the last 12, over 12-month period for all past due things, and are to remain current in the future. Do they pay monthly or quarterly? How do they usually remit payments to us?
Normally, if they're in compliance, they submit payments quarterly. So, for the end of June, they submit a payment by August 15th.
Okay. And if six months from now, we give us till February?
Would you be willing to defer to February 21st?
That would be great, because then by that time, they should have the payments for the period ending December 31st to us.
Okay. Can I ask a question to staff and possibly legal? And is this, would you recommend, can this be the best way to handle? I mean, obviously, we're looking at a, if you want to call it a grace period, or with what Councilmember Thurmond's saying, would it be better to deny removing this Billy Loveless off the list, and then give staff the direction that six months from now, or that date, they come back with, you know, we may have another agenda item to remove them? Would that be, which is a cleaner way to do it? Right now, we're trying, whether we approve or deny them being removed from the list, would it be cleaner to do, as Councilmember Thurmond says, and just defer it, or to remove, or vote one way or the other on removing them and then bring it back up if there's a problem?
I guess, would I get a...
Well, just a point of order, I mean, a motion is on the table.
Yeah, there's been, has there been a second?
There's not been a second.
There has not been a second. We started to ask questions on a motion that hasn't been seconded.
Give a second, please.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion seconded, yeah.
And I'll tell you, my thought process was, if they knew that this was just being deferred and had not been denied, and they knew it was going to be coming back up at that February meeting, they're maybe more likely to make sure that they're in compliance, because they knew that it would be back. I hope we will not have to go through all this. I hope at the February meeting, Matt could say they've just done everything they were supposed to do, and make it real easy on all of us, but I just thought if they knew for sure they had to come up back in six months, then they'd be more likely.
All right, I've got a motion in a second, so is there any discussion on...
Go ahead. Interject, and I don't know if this is my place to interject or not, and I'm okay if that's what the council wants to do. I think six months is a terribly long time to put this on a status check. I think more about 30 days, we're going to know if this is going to work or not. If there's 60 days, six months out, my fear, honestly, if we go six months out, is that we go for five months and 25 days again, and then get a flurry of communication.
I think it's easier than that, Chris, because, I mean, right now, we've got a quarterly payment that's due, we've got a months of arrears that are due, and I think we can measure them very easily moving forward, month by month. Either they're making their payments and their quarterly payments, or they're not. If they don't make those payments, then, you know, they've broken the trust that we've put into them, so. I would still say you're going to need a little bit of time. I mean, anybody can make one payment or the second one, you may want to give them a chance, at least 90 days, if not the six months.
Well, the reason why I had said six months, because it would allow them to make six months of past due payments, plus their two quarterly payments, that would be due, was why I had said that.
I'm certainly fine with that. I just don't want it to get out and get away from us.
And that would be my only concern, as a struggling business and trying to write everything, give them a little bit of time to be able to build up their revenue, so that they can show a track record for six months versus just one or two more.
But I'm assuming if they wait five months and then come before us, and...
I would, I would say, Ms. Wright, and to Mr. Loveless, if this motion passes, that you guys, you know, look at this as, hey, the city's trying to help you out, giving you a break, but, you know, this is an opportunity to start out on the right foot and get caught up, and hopefully, it'll ultimately end up being a good business for you and a good partner for the city, so. We've got a motion in a second that we defer this for six months. What was the date?
February.
February 21st. Is there any other discussion on that? Councilmember...
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the motion, and I don't know if we want to do this, would we want to require as part of this deferral, communication, so that, and again, maybe we don't want to dictate that, but I think what we've heard is that the communication has been inconsistent, and so I just wonder if...
Well, I mean, I think part of the communication is, you know, they're going to have to be giving us a check every single month for the past due, and then quarterly for the other stuff, including with the report, so...
I was just going to suggest that we might want to require a report that says, what have you accomplished in this 30-day period?
I'd almost rather, I mean, staff knows their job, and Matt's going to be working with them and whatnot, and I'm going to assume that you're going to be in communications and, right, with Matt. So, I would almost say, if there is a problem, then Matt and Chris need to bring that back to us.
And I've got one...
But that's a pretty obvious part of their job.
Quick question for the city attorney. If we realize three months from now that there's a real problem, can we bring this back again?
Well, that's the, that's the trick. I mean, because right now, it's a six-month, it's a six-month postponement. You might want to either do an amendment or restate the motion such that if there is, you know, perhaps a two-month, a two-month incidence of noncompliance, that the six months can basically be fast-forwarded, and it can be almost like a payment of a note, it can automatically come due, and you can bring it right back to council. Because I think the six months serves the benefit of showing that there is a history now of good and faithful stewardship, but if after 60 days, and any time during that six months, you don't see that, I think you ought to have the right to bring it right back here and shut this down, if you feel...
I would like to amend my motion to state...
Second.
I would draw my second.
I'd like to, I'd like to restate the motion that we are deferring this until the February 21st council meeting, but if at any time, they are noncompliant on all issues for two months, then we can bring this forward the next council meeting after the noncompliance.
Second the motion.
Okay. I've got a motion in a second for a six-month or February 21st deferral, but with also the caveat that if there's a two-month noncompliance, staff can bring that back to the council, and it can be heard immediately or basically called at that point.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wright, do you understand what the council is doing this evening?
Yes, I do.
Are you agreeable with that on behalf of Mr. Loveless?
I am.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's no other comments, do I, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I want to wish Ms. Wright and Mr. Loveless good luck, and we hope you...
Happy hauling.
You guys will be successful, and appreciate your working with us.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you.
I hope business picks up.
Yeah, but picks up. No pun intended. It's been really stinky here.
Okay. Do you want to continue?
Okay, well, the city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for fiscal year 2010 and for other purposes. First presentation is on August 9th. Public hearing was held today on August 16th. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening again. As I mentioned during our public hearing, the staff recommends a mileage rate of 4.731 mils to be approved, using the tax digest that was given to us by the county. Total taxes to be levied are $9.1 million for property taxes, and $478,000 for motor vehicle taxes.
Okay, is there any questions for Stacy? Okay, if there's none, do I have a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 101204, Approval of an Ordinance for the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for the fiscal year 2010 and for other purposes.
Second the motion. A motion by Councilmember Hewitt, and a second by, for approval, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a resolution. Adopting the city of Milton Parks and Recreation needs assessment results and supplement for use by the... Needs Assessment Results and Supplement for Use by the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department. This is Agenda Item Number 10-12-13, first heard, it reports in presentation on June 7th, and then heard under staff reports on August 2nd. Ms. Cindy Venaci.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is basically just a housekeeping item. We have completed the needs assessment survey. We have had a presentation of the results of that survey. We have also taken the time to collect all of the write-in responses that were included on the survey. That was completed this summer, and we have added that data as a supplement to the original presentation from the Shapiro Group. So basically, this resolution just allows us to accept the results of the survey and move forward with using it as a planning document for future initiatives.
Okay, is there any questions for Cindy?
Thank you, Cindy. Just a quick housekeeping question. I think it's fair to presume, but I want to ask, is that by accepting this data, it doesn't preclude you from utilizing other surveys and other information from the past? It's just adding this to the plethora of information you have available to you?
Correct. Basically, this is just another tool in our toolbox as we move forward with additional planning, future initiatives, allocations. This provides data to us to move forward with what's best for the citizens.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 10-12-13, A Resolution Adopting the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment Results and Supplement for Use by the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department. And if you would, staff, please correct the misspelling of supplement in the title and categorize it in Section 4, before you post it on the web.
I second that. And the spelling correction is on.
I have a motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Longoria. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Our spell check doesn't work very well, does it? It's like being in that outlook, it doesn't work.
Well, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a resolution allowing the City of Milton to discuss various parks and recreation partnerships with the City of Alpharetta. Agenda Item Number 10-12-14, Ms. Cindy Venaci.
Mayor and Council, this resolution is before you. Since receiving the completed needs assessment survey results, we have been exploring opportunities to provide services to our citizens, programs, facilities. We are exploring all options and resources that may be available to us in our community. One of those potential opportunities is with the City of Alpharetta. There has been suggestion that at least two programs offered at North Park could be Alpharetta and Milton programs. It could become a joint effort of both cities working together, as well as probably maybe some other future possibilities of partnerships, with North Park being surrounded entirely by the City of Milton. However, prior to being able to discuss these potential opportunities with the City of Alpharetta, they requested that we did officially pass a resolution allowing both parties to come together and discuss these opportunities for partnership.
Okay. Bill, you got a question for Cindy?
So will they pass a companion resolution?
We have not requested that to date, but if that is a request of the council, I'm happy to do that.
Any other questions?
I'm not sure why we need the resolution, but go talk.
I think they just want to make sure we're all on board, so.
Yes.
Okay.
I can tell you why.
If there's no more questions, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I've got a motion. I'll put forward a motion to approve the resolution allowing the City of Milton to discuss various parks and recreation partnerships with the City of Alpharetta. Agenda Item Number 10-12-14.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Thurman. Do we have any discussion on this?
No, I just don't think I'd say so. I'm glad you guys are talking.
But all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, if, city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of a waiver of conflict on behalf of Gerard and Davis, LLP, in connection with the IGA between the City of Milton and Forsyth County regarding Milton and Forsyth's joint funding of the performance of certain work on the Guinness Ferry Road from its bridge at Georgia Highway 400 to Bethany Bend. This is Agenda Item Number 10-12-15, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our firm has been asked on behalf of the City of Milton to work with the Public Works Department to develop an IGA with respect to a joint works, public works project for the road construction project on the Guinness Ferry Road from its bridge at Georgia Highway 400 to Bethany Bend. This will involve both Milton and Forsyth County doing mutual bids for this project, as well as entering into a fee-sharing agreement with the successful bidder. Obviously, in that capacity, we have to prepare an IGA that will allow this sort of joint activity between Milton and Forsyth County. There is, this is not a contentious item. I think it is an item that serves the mutual benefit of both parties. It will be done in full conjunction with both staffs, and everyone will be comfortable with the verbiage in it. However, for me to represent both sides of this equation, I do need a conflict waiver. I will tell you and can represent that Forsyth County has already considered this same resolution and has approved it, waiving the conflict. If there was anything that I felt the least bit conflicted about, or felt that my allegiances to either side would be, would be, you know, one side would be disadvantaged over the other, I would tell you and of course, recommend that you get conflict counsel. This is not that sort of a situation, however. And I would respectfully ask that you all approve this, so we can get this IGA done.
Okay, do we have any questions? The only thing I'd like to ask Ken is, can you, when you're doing this work, could you please bill Forsyth County?
I had something quippy to say, but it will inevitably land up on a blog.
Just for the record, just for the record, you know, I am kidding.
I won't say it, I'll simply nod.
Just, you know, can you bill them $100, and that's five, I don't want them thinking something.
That's going to be fair. Carter's so easy to work with.
Leave that sleeping dog.
Okay. Do, is any other questions? If not, I have a motion in a second.
Mayor, make a motion to approve waiver of conflict on behalf of Gerard and Davis, LLP, in connection with an IGA between the City of Milton and Forsyth County regarding Milton and Forsyth's joint funding of the performance of certain work on the Guinness Ferry Road from its bridge at Georgia Highway 400 to Bethany Bend. Agenda Item Number 10-12-15.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Lascaux, a second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the next item we have deferred, so move on to council reports. I want to ask one thing, I want to, was it next, next week that we are taking the picture?
That's correct.
For the, I know the staff's doing a picture, and then we're updating our pictures. And I was talking to Jason about it earlier, and the question is, do we want to do this as a formal picture or a casual picture?
This is next Monday.
Yeah.
That's correct.
My, and is this, is this a group picture, is that? It's a group picture, yeah, because we're talking, getting everybody in there. You know, my personal opinion is, with the small-town field of Milton, more of a casual place and equestrian, I like the informal picture more, because it, you know, it doesn't look like politicians and whatnot, it looks like regular people that live here and are governing our city, but I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll let, you know, I can put on a tie too, so whatever, I'm going to ask, kind of ask the council and get their feeling, and whatever the majority would like to do, I'm certainly happy with, so. Does anybody have any preferences, one way or the other?
I'd like to wear a bolo tie.
I would prefer not to wear a tie myself.
Ladies don't have to wear one. Ladies can wear whatever, it's neither way a problem.
My question would be, would it be casual, is it, is it in our little Milton shirts, or just whatever we wear?
You guys have Milton shirts. Hey, you have to be a councilman for two years, Joe.
Hey, Joe, you're welcome. I'll loan you my shirt.
When I say casual, I mean, you know, khaki pants and maybe a collared shirt, but not t-shirts and shorts, but that.
I don't know if that's a thing, you know, I mean, like everybody wears one.
And Jason may want to weigh in, I don't know where, I thought Jason...
I mean, it's really up to you guys.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the traction.
I guess part of the, we haven't voted on a calendar or anything, I guess it's, is this going to be what on the website or?
This is for the website launch, yes, it's, and something else.
Caffer.
Oh, the caffer.
We'll use it in the...
It's really all about just the direction we want to go and portray, so, again, I've made my, what my opinion is, but I'm certainly, if the majority council wants to go in a different direction, I'm totally fine with that. So actually, you know, if we want to just kind of start at one end and give a quick thought, what's your thoughts? I guess, Karen?
Personally, I would prefer it not to be too formal, but, I mean, not being cut off, but, you know.
Julie?
Do we have to ride a horse? No. I am flexible and will do whatever the majority wishes to.
That's a non-answer. You have to come down on one side or the other.
Oh, it's not fair for women, because they can kind of wear something that would fit both ways.
They don't know if it's casual or not.
I'm aware of my wearing stuff.
Bill?
Oh, I got a brand-new pair of bib overalls. Wait for an opportunity to wear it. Casual is fine.
I like casual, but I would like to see it maybe a little defined, I mean, some unity.
I'm good with casual, but I would like to have some guidelines.
I'm good with casual, I like some guidelines, because there's a difference between jeans and khakis.
Well, no, and that's why I said, I mean, I'm not suggesting...
I'm just saying, yeah.
I'm suggesting, you know, khaki pants, for men, khaki pants and a, obviously, a collared shirt. I don't know that we have a colored thing, but a collared, you know, at least a collared shirt, not a t-shirt, anything like that. You could do the, wear a button-down shirt or shirt like this. Really, probably professional casual, but no tie.
Not much unlike I'm dressed today.
Yeah, that'd be what I would say. So is everybody all in that?
So Karen, do not have to wear a necktie.
You don't have to wear a necktie.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. Moving on. Just FYI, I know we discussed this a while back with the high school in Noyes and Tim Enlow, and I have, just to let you guys know, because we committed to meeting with the principal, I have contacted the principal, I'm waiting to get a meeting set up, an exact time, and I'll let you guys know if anybody wants to attend that too, but, and I'll get with staff too, just to make sure that we do meet with the principal and Mr. Enlow to address the concerns there. All right, the only other thing, now that I, since I see Chief Edgar's face out here, I was at a meeting in Forsyth County the other, last week, and with a bunch of firemen and fire chiefs and all that, and I just kept getting some praise from the community and working with the City of Milton and our, both Chief Edgar and the rest of our fire guys, so I just want to give you a kudos on that. So, and anybody else on council want to bring something up or report anything? Okay, then we'll move on to staff reports.
Well, I can tell you, Mayor and Council, our meeting has just begun. I think we've handled the vast part of it, believe it or not. I know, that's not what anybody wanted to hear. I want to remind you all of the budget workshop next week, obviously, that we're planning these pictures ahead of. We have a published staff report tonight, as well as a published executive session. And looking over my left shoulder, I realize that we have a second attorney who has joined this for the executive session. I might, and I've checked with Ken, he's okay with this, I might recommend that we move to executive session for the one item that we have a lawyer here for, come back out, do the staff report, and then go back into executive session to finish the night. So if you are all okay with that, if somebody would like to make a motion, this will only be a motion to adjourn into executive session for pending litigation.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive set, executive session for pending litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a motion by Councilmember Clark, a second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Let's go do one, and we'll come back out.
Well as Tom would say, you know.
What's up, man?
What's going on? Same old, same old. Nothing new? You're welcome to go home if you want. It's up to you. We're fine. You're welcome to stay too, but I mean...
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, that's it. That was that actually providing service for city is part of District Five? So District Five has not done what they're supposed to do?
I'm gonna get with our graphics, um, what do we call them? Director of the Page and Graphics?
We have it on.
Do I have a motion to, uh, brief and be...
I have a second?
Good.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember last second, by Councilmember Longoria, that I did, uh...
Good job.
Tell Julie she had a couple minutes to get something, and Karen wanted to get something.
Karen's back.
Right, Karen got it. We can all just get something.
I went, didn't go get my cheeses, 'cause I wasn't sure if already talked to me to get Chick-fil-A.
I even offered to pay. Oh, you took me up on it?
What are you getting?
All right.
Huh? Spicy.
Okay, so you, y'all got certain things? So, yeah, I mean, you might as well, 'cause otherwise we'll come back with just a...
As long as you come back with some spicy sandwiches.
The Basco.
We're gonna take a vote.
Just come back.
What's spicy?
What's our prediction for how much longer this is gonna last?
Couple hours.
Really?
Our next executive session will be... I can't get in here, I'm in a room, so, sorry.
Okay. Spicy. Solution spicy.
Spicy, spicy.
Regular.
Spicy, three spices.
I'm so sorry, what are we...
Four.
Regular?
Okay, so we have...
Chick-fil-A. Can I get, I'm sorry to ask this, can I get a grilled chicken salad?
Oh, my gosh!
Ma'am, that'll be extra.
That's fine. Actually, the Southwest Chicken Salad.
That would be nice.
Southwest Chicken Salad.
What?
How about some french fries, too?
I'll take freedom.
Thank you. I've had an apple and a thing of tomato juice today, so...
Fries, too.
One chicken sandwich would not do it.
Say it.
Come on, say it.
Come on, Chris. Did you get the fries in that, Chris? Chris, did you get the fries?
Yeah, you should.
There's a councilman that wants a piece of lemon pie as well.
No, I'll take the fries. I said I'd pay for it.
You're making us stay here two more hours?
No fries, fries.
Fries. We were backing, we were giving you the lemon pie, we were backing up on that, we just wanted the fries.
If you came back with a piece of...
This is all about negotiation, isn't it? I see all...
We need to mediate some help. There you go.
And I, oh, that sounds good. I'm thinking...
And hopefully we don't have a security issue while you're gone.
I had apple and a can of tomato juice.
Is anybody want these sauces, barbecue?
He likes the Basco.
I like barbecue.
Tabasco.
We're gonna ask you what they want on my Southwest salad.
We're gonna have to get in the city van and order the drive-through.
I meant salad.
Is that Granicus thing mobile?
Southwest dressing.
I'm sure it is.
And two of those we have.
Yeah, we just need to hook it up to my laptop, I'll keep it on the whole time.
Thank you very much. The idea of food, we're suddenly all very interested.
Nope.
I usually get Pauline.
It's still, it's still not even spicy.
Yes.
Spicy, not spicy chicken salad.
So many people are mixing the two. But at least...
Mine is the pickles on cheese, and onions on...
I like two pickles, leave the pickles on.
Lightly buttered.
All right, I'm leaving before anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cut the lights on.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Let's go back, uh, we'll go back to staff reports.
That's right, we've got, uh, a carryover from last week, team staff reports tonight, which is rural preservation, innovative zoning, um, presentation discussion. Um, I'll tell you all, this is something that comes to us after our retreat that we had when we were in GMA Savannah. And one of the items that was on the discussion block was to talk about innovative zoning application, protect Milton as Milton looks today, and the fair and fair and field that we all like of Milton. And if you go back to that, those days in Savannah, what I asked was at least the opportunity for staff to put together some thoughts first, um, before we started to trudge down a road of, you know, creating an e-zoning designation or how any of that works. So let us go back to some of our planning staff and some of our experts and say, um, from exceptional planning practices, what are some of the different options that exist? And bring that point to the council for consideration. Uh, this presentation is a culmination of that, this is in no way intended to be the last discussion that occurs on this topic, this is just to start to get some of the concepts out there. Um, and, uh, I could just talk and talk and talk, but I won't, I'll let, uh, Lynn kind of take it away and walk through where we are, um, and we'll see what kind of discussion we get.
Uh, the question was brought up last, uh, last week, before we adjourned, as to whether or not this was considered by CPAC and some of the other citizens' input groups. And I can say that in a very general, on a very general premise, that CPAC, yes, has considered a lot of these. Um, you'll see that Planning Commission has also included several of these as their projects, uh, for completion in this next fiscal year as well. Um, let me just start by going over a little history. You know, when we think of rural preservation, it's not necessarily requiring agriculture. And in fact, when we have required agriculture in the past, it really has not maybe served us as well, or fared us as well as we had intended. What we have done in the past is kind of used it as a holding zone for future development. Um, what I'm showing you here is a map that is an analysis of parcels by size. Um, this map is...
Y'all not seeing this?
Y'all see that?
I'm not seeing anything.
You don't see anything?
Turn the power on.
Well, that helps.
Turn the monitors off.
All the monitors off? We're good.
Other end, Bill.
All right, okay. Well, the map that you see here is a map that was compiled in 2000, and it ranges, as you can see, from whites to very dark blues. Um, the dark blues are the largest parcels. So, as you can see on this map, there's a fairly nice dark blue band as you run along the west and southwest, um, boundaries of Milton. Those things that we share with Cherokee County and even some into Forsyth County, it runs all the way up to Birmingham and across, I think that's not unexpected. The next map is an analysis of parcels by size conducted this year. There's a very stark difference in the dark blue parcels and even the darkest blue parcels. Um, we're looking at parcels that have been broken up, and there's been an erosion of that band in particular. This comparative view shows the Birmingham area, and it shows, uh, you can see, I think highlighted in yellow, um, those areas that had that larger parcel size and that have now been broken into one-acre lots.
So those are two specific developments, 'cause I'm from, one's twenty-three acres and one's like twenty-seven, if I think about that, if I'm looking at that view correctly.
That's entirely probable. I've got the black and white version.
Yeah. But looking at the 2010 view, when you say in Birmingham, and Birmingham actually encompasses a lot more than just that portion of the road, but, um, like Hickory Flat as an example, just those two, just to give people perspective, the, that which is south is a twenty-three acre parcel, um, and the dark, and I'm, I'm just interjecting to make sure I understand what I'm looking at. The original 2000, the dark blues were like sixty-plus.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm not, I'm still not sure that we're looking at apples to apples, since some of these parcels that are highlighted as converting are twenty acres, and that there's...
Well, they're all larger than one.
Right.
And so, and like I say, what I, what we're seeing is that they're all being converted from, whether it be twenty acres, forty acres, or sixty-plus acres, to one-acre lots. And you can see the same thing in the Little River area, as you follow again that, um, Cherokee County border. The majority of it, again, is being eroded by single one-acre lots. And so, like I said before, I don't think that the agricultural zoning, as we have used it in the past, is, is serving us the way we had intended for it to. So that brings us to the question, so what is rural preservation? And I see it in three ways here in Milton. Particularly, it is, number one, the preservation of a look and feel, a rural typology, if you will, of, uh, of sparsely populated area, farmlands abounding, um, very small local commerce areas. This typology that you, you see and feel as a resident or as a visitor, so as you're driving through, for instance. And number two, I see it as a preservation of economic viability for farming, both existing and future farming. And number three, I see it as a preservation of existing and new green spaces. And, uh, these green spaces can be agriculture, but they don't have to be. So what I've included in this presentation are some strategies that address specifically those three goals, those three types of preservation. Again, I would remind you that, um, there are several of these that are also noted on the Planning Commission priority list for projects to be identified and begun within this next fiscal year. Um, those are noted on this list with an asterisk or even two, um, to let you know that those are also on the Planning Commission priority list. So we'll start with the first, and that's preservation of a rural typology. And so it includes several different strategies, I've got eight listed, I believe. The first is conservation design, and now that is not only conservation subdivision, but it's also low-impact design. Um, it includes other elements of, um, new development that would include additional green space and preserve that green space. Number two is an updated buffer standard. Um, this is a buffer that would not only protect agriculture, or excuse me, residences from agricultural uses, but vice versa. Um, we don't always think of the agricultural uses needing a buffer, but in fact, they at many times do. Number three, small, well-defined commercial crossroads. We currently have, um, several crossroads identified, uh, we have some master planning in place, um, some of those master plans need to be updated, uh, and again, need to be shored up such that, uh, we can actually, um, implement what was intended by those plans. Um, sometimes we're seeing that, and I think in, in some cases, we're not. Number four is rural view shed protection. And what I mean by that are increased buffers along specific roadways, particularly those traveled, uh, a lot by visitors as well as residents. So some of our major corridors that are in the more rural parts of Milton, not necessarily, obviously, in Highway Nine or anything like that, but view sheds that, um, are protected by bigger setbacks, by specific requirements for tree preservation along those view sheds. Three seventy-two, for instance, might be one. Number five, rural design standards in a rural protection area. Um, we may want to consider providing specific design standards, uh, for, uh, what we would deem a rural protection area. Um, I think that was contemplated as part of the Northwest Fulton overlay, but maybe not fully executed, um, and so that might be something we would want to consider as well. Number six, to actively encourage our farmers' markets. Um, that's one of those, um, things that, that would, um, that would reinforce our local commerce. Uh, and it's, again, it's something that we've started by allowing them in mixed, MIx districts, uh, but there are other things, including extending the length of time that can be available, um, to actively encourage those markets. Number seven, to allow and encourage a community garden. And community gardens now are a byproduct of what is being called agricultural urbanism, and it's one of the next waves of, of, uh, planning thought, um, so it is kind of on the vanguard, as it were. But it does base new development on an agricultural background. So instead of the community garden or the, um, CSA, we can, shared agricultural, community shared agriculture, being on a vacant lot in an already developed area, the development is actually planned around the agricultural uses. So, um, that's something that, um, we can look further into and to begin to discover as a, as a good strategy. And number eight, the protection of hillsides and steep slopes. Are there any questions on that slide before we move on? Yes, sir?
Um, I'm aware of some community garden development in the immediate area here, I'm talking to someone who's familiar with it, and, uh, apparently, there's been a lot of, uh, not only controversy, but out and out, uh, vandalism and warfare associated with these. People stealing each other's, uh, produce and claim jumping. Or, uh, really, really stuff.
We're gonna hire additional police officers to, uh, to man the community garden.
Is there a community in here somewhere?
Yeah. Neighbors do need to be neighborly.
Yeah, we can't really...
So I wonder, what experience do you have with one of them?
Um, one of the ones that I, I do have some familiarity with is, uh, there's one in Swanee that is the largest, actually, community shared garden, community shared agriculture, um, in Georgia. And it seems to be working. Now, it's fairly new, uh, but it is, it's fairly extensive, and it's, uh, it's one that, when I say community shared, a lot of times, um, what you'll see with those CSAs, and I can talk about this more later, but what you'll see with the CSAs is that, um, a restaurant, for instance, might buy so many shares in this garden, and as it produces so many tomatoes, it gets this amount of, a certain amount of tomatoes back for use in its salsa. Yeah, and, and then they promote that they use locally grown produce, um, things of that nature. Um, and that's how this one works, sort of, in Swanee, but, um, but it does seem to work. So there are ways to do it. I know that, um, several subdivisions have asked if they could put in their own community gardens. Um, we don't really have a vehicle for that, um, but it's something that, like I said, I think we need to look into.
It's American version of a kibbutz?
Um, something like that, yes, sir.
Is there anything that really precludes, your point about subdivisions, Lynn, is there anything that precludes them, you know, as part of their amenities package, is there anything that precludes them, as part of that amenities package, from having part of that area set aside as a community garden? I know that we can always improve on that, but I'm just wondering, is there anything that would really preclude it?
Um, sometimes there are questions about parking and things of that nature. I don't, I don't know that we have specifically addressed it, but not having specifically approved it, it makes it much more difficult for someone to put it in. So, I, again, if we could get ahead of the game, I think that would help.
Ma'am?
Go ahead.
Question, the, the small, well-defined commercial crossroads?
Mm-hmm.
How, how does that help meet the objective of rural preservation?
Again, it goes to that rural typology, so it's, um, the small, local commerce feel. So again, if you've got a crossroads that's, that appears to be specifically geared towards, um, the more mom-and-pop type stores, the, uh, things that aren't franchised, um, so you're looking at local products, local businesses, things that don't serve, um, maybe a, a full city, but might serve a neighborhood or three, versus, like I say, a, a region-wide attraction.
Okay. But Lynn, are you necessarily suggesting, I think I've heard you said that you're not suggesting more of those, but I think I heard it was that instead, just to look at those that already exist?
Right.
And ensure that the thing, the measurements that were put in place to ensure that that remains well-defined have longevity?
Yes, ma'am, at this point, I'm not looking at any new ones necessarily. And again, I think that would depend a lot on, on the results of CPAC and the future land use planning.
And just, as a subset to that, because when we went through, as part of the whole planning process and future land use planning process, a lot of the charrettes that took place in this room had many maps out, where people were cert, you know, and staff had actually identified new, small community nodes, and the pushback we got from the community, as evidenced by the record and everything else, was that they didn't want more of those. So I just want to make sure that, as Chris pointed out, that this document discussion tonight is not to now say, we're now kind of gonna backtrack and resubmit those, because I think just this past summer, we went back through that process. So I guess I've got a little bit of question there, since as part of our whole DCA submission, we had those charrettes where I, I think a lot of the community came away and said, okay, I had my input, they were showing all these additional crossroad communities, we, the community kept saying, no, 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 we took them off, and I just want to make sure we're not being disingenuous to the citizenry if we now suddenly say, oh, we were just kidding, we didn't really take those off, we're gonna add them back.
Now, I think the intent really is to shore up what we have.
Okay.
Um, I don't think the intent is to, to add any new ones, and again, I haven't seen that from CPAC at this point, uh, and I don't really expect to, but again, I don't want to tie their hands.
So this will be, this is just a first step, all of this will be coordinated with CPAC, 'cause I think I was...
That's correct.
That they've, you may have generally talked about this, but that may be at the fifty-thousand-foot level, that defining conservation subdivisions as CPAC might define it, 'cause I'm, I'm the first to say I've got some hesitation with how those have been defined historically.
I understand. And I will say that, um, CPAC right now is looking at their short-term work program and their implementation measures, um, and, and in there, they have got, um, several of these items listed, as well as, you know, that's probably why they also show back up on the Planning Commission priorities list. So we are coordinating that. Again, you're right, they are currently at a, at a much more broad scale, um, but as we kind of work to nail down how to implement them and, and when, and which ones to give first priority, um, the conservation subdivisions are likely to pop back up, uh, they are on the list, so...
But it's not as the, so they haven't yet been prioritized by CPAC or Planning Commission, I guess that's why I'm a little confused about the time, but you've got CPAC hanging out there, doing their work, the Planning Commission, then we've got this presentation, and I get the sense that maybe these all haven't yet come together, but will?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fair to say?
That, that is fair to say. That is fair to say. I think that, um, and in fact, you'll see on the priority list, uh, conservation design plan, they had originally expected to start in August, to start working on it. Um, and then as part of that plan, we would look at different elements, including low-impact design, including conservation subdivisions. So, we've still got a ways to go, it's a nine-month project, that's the approximate length, and those are probably even generous.
And is it fair to say that conservation design doesn't necessarily mean a conservation subdivision as has been defined historically?
That's correct, that's correct. There are some, um, more innovative ways to do the, to implement conservation subdivisions than maybe what you have seen in our neighboring counties, for instance, um, and we'd look to find the newest models to start with.
And maybe create our own?
Yes, ma'am.
As opposed to, those are triller guys for higher density?
So what am I hearing here?
What does high density mean?
Never mind.
Depends on the area.
Are we precluding, uh, the traditional definition of conservation subdivisions? Is that what...
I don't think we're precluding the traditional definition, I think we're defining it, um, giving it more definition than maybe, the original definition was probably a lot more general than I've seen modeled in, in the latest models.
I thought what I heard was we're throwing out the traditional definition.
Now, let me be very clear, 'cause I've now heard three things, I did not say we're throwing it out, but I heard our mayor said we're tweaking it, and I don't think, I, I hope we're doing more than just tweaking a, a definition of something that our community has said they don't want, which is some of the definitions we've seen from neighboring communities, and, and I think we've probably heard some of that from CPAC and Planning Commission, at least, I, I think that's what we've heard in different charrettes with the, the community, et cetera. What, I'll just be very clear, what I think I said was that we're not defining what conservation means yet, we're saying that conservation can mean a lot of different things. There's folks out there based on how they've been defined historically, that didn't feel that that represented the Milton image or vision, and that we're not precluding, we know what that definition is yet, but that it needs to go to Planning Commission, it needs to go to CPAC, it needs to go through staff's professional analysis. That's, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, I want to make sure that this is not saying we're rubber-stamping tonight a conservation subdivision based on how it's been defined historically, when we've heard from this community over and over and over again that that's not what they expect.
I mean, aren't we looking at this kind of from a forty-foot level, and right now, we're getting down on the, on the, being ants on the streets? We're, this is really just a big picture, we're not setting any kind of policy, we're not making any kind of ordinances, this is just kind of ideas out there we're gonna explore.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And we're trying to get some priority level, again, like you said, the Planning Commission has prioritized them based on what they felt like, what they felt like were, um, your, uh, goals and strategies based on the last retreat, and so, in light of that, they're, they're bringing these forward, so...
I'm not gonna eat out here.
Well, I'll try not to keep this too much longer.
Did you get my diet coke?
And Lynn, just while they're talking about food, um, did, did the Planning Commission already prioritize their list, or they're in, they're, CPAC was in process?
The Planning Commission has already prioritized their list, that's what's attached to the back of the, uh, this presentation.
But the CPAC is in process of prioritizing theirs?
That is correct. CPAC is currently going through, and again, you have to remember, CPAC thinks in at least five-year increments. So we're looking at a short-term work program, which is a five-year work program, and a long-term implementation program, which is everything else. So, um, like I said, simply because it might be a high priority for CPAC doesn't mean it happens this year or next, even, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, again, to keep us from our food a little bit longer, or at least not to keep us from our food. Um, moving on, preservation of the viability of existing and new farms, I've listed six different strategies that we could take, particularly, um, number one on the list, and number one on Planning Commission's list is implementation of TDR program as a vehicle to protect and maintain value. Obviously, a lot of that TDR program is gonna be based on the work that CPAC does, so we've, I'm really pushing CPAC pretty hard in order to get them to where we can have something to present to you all that you can feel comfortable getting to DCA.
This year?
Yes, ma'am. December twentieth is my goal, to, for you all to approve it and send it to DCA, uh, and again, they'll take their time, but we'll have done the majority of our work at that point, we'll be ninety-eight percent, so, um, and I think, and they're responding well, so I mean, it's, it's a cordial thing. But, um, but high on that list is the TDR program, and again, that would depend, um, a, a lot on the work that CPAC does, as to where the sending areas are and where the receiving areas could be.
And Lynn, just to clarify, you're saying about would, that that's anticipated to be part of what gets submitted to DCA, not just as a short-term work item, but that the work tied to TDRs as it relates to the future land use plan would be part of what gets submitted?
Well, what they'll do is they'll identify those areas that can accommodate higher density, and as part of that, then obviously, those areas that are not part of that higher density, are, that are part of the rural character area, those areas would then be the sending areas, and the receiving areas would be those that could accommodate the higher densities.
And had we been talking about this in a work session, which is why I'm gonna make this comment now, 'cause I think in that environment, we would have had this to dialogue, is that my hope would be that we, um, do as much as we can in pursuing transfer development rights, that we don't anticipate it a year or two years from now, but that at the time that we're looking and evaluating our future land use plan... that we're looking and evaluating our future land use plan, that we really do make sure that those things are happening in parallel. Um, I think otherwise, we end up with a missed opportunity. If we have a future land use plan that identifies density in places where it doesn't exist today, and we don't send the density from an existing location, we haven't benefited the future citizens or the existing citizens, because we've kind of missed that opportunity to do so. So, I would just, I would hope, and I know that you're doing that, but I, I think it's important, from a policy perspective, that we don't allow those to get too disconnected, because I think otherwise, we're gonna end up with an ideal of a TDR that doesn't get implemented on the ground, as it relates to where we would see future density happening.
Number two, right to farm policies, which would then protect agricultural use from new development, um, similar to our, our buffers that protect agricultural from, uh, new residential development. We'd have right to farm policies put in place. And again, that, that might be a culmination of, um, three or four smaller ordinances that allow, that allow and, and, um, even promote agricultural uses and farming. Um, that we separate AG and residential uses and zoning. I think the map, um, specifically talks about that, or specifically shows that and illustrates that, you know, the way we're doing it is, is really overkilling our, our residential zoning, um, and overstressing that. I think once we can clarify, um, some of the fuzzy areas of our, of our AG zoning, I think we'll be much better off. And that may include creation of a new zoning district, but it won't only include that. The allowance of small-scale, value-added farm products by right. Um, we talk about produce stands, and we talk about farmers' markets, but we don't necessarily specifically allow them, um, jams, jellies, wines, um, that are made on-site. Uh, and again, I don't expect that there'll be any large-scale production, you know, we don't expect any poultry houses or anything like that typically, not here. But I would, wouldn't be surprised if we saw more of the, um, homegrown products, you know, whether they be canned sauces or, um, even barbecue sauce, but... Number five, to allow agritourism by right. Those could be anything from petting farms to corn mazes to horse camps and bed and breakfast. So, um, again, we don't necessarily specifically address a lot of these things, uh, and some we may not want, but we need to, uh, we need to look at them in their totality and start cutting out those things that we might not want, and say, "Okay, these are the things that we feel like are allowable and, and permissible in our AG zoning district." This, like, again, would allow our agricultural industry to continue to make money on our farms, therefore keeping them as farms versus, uh, selling them for additional development.
Lynn, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, as it relates to both, probably number four and five, and maybe even some of the others, is there a way, and again, I don't necessarily expect a specific answer tonight, but when we look at that, intensity of use comes to mind, because it's one thing to say, "I'm gonna sell barbecue sauce on the side of the road." It's another when you go to, you know, a, a production, production facility. It's no longer that interesting, small-scale sort of a situation. Or, um, a petting farm, or, again, there's a distinction between that, which is local, versus that, which suddenly becomes intensive, intensity of use. And I just, I'm assuming, but rather than to assume, I'm assuming that that's part of what that dialogue would be?
Yes, ma'am.
Is how do you, how do you coexist with those versus when does it become too much like an amusement park that no longer maintains the character that you started with?
Exactly. Exactly. And that's the discussion we would have during a work session, where these things would be presented, and you all would tell me, "No, we just don't want to do that." And, and that's fine.
Well, I guess I'm looking more, and my, my thought would be that just as you go through this thought process and start to give more definition to what you envision that could be, is that we think about those sorts of things, is how do, how do you make that distinction between that, which is commensurate with the vision of our citizens, and that which may have the name farm, but suddenly, you know, is now a, um, mass-production sort of tourism location, where you've got thousands of people have come and, and maybe that's okay in certain areas, but I just think, we, we can't call it one thing and not realize the distinction between one volume and a different volume. I think volume starts to impact the impact to the area.
Absolutely.
But these are all things we're gonna be discussing when we look at each of these individual things, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then, finally, again, to support CSAs and farmers' markets. Are there questions on this slide before I move on? I know I got a few looks, so, yes, ma'am.
I would, the reason I gave you a look?
That's okay.
Is because I didn't realize that, um, bed and breakfasts are AG-zoned. I thought they would've become commercially zoned. So, so that's why I gave you that look, but the more I thought about it, I guess the more it made sense, so then I, I controlled my own freak out there.
Is it currently without a special use permit? A bed and breakfast is not by right on AG-1 land?
Let me ask you.
No, it's not. I mean, that's...
Robbins, the expert on that.
Yeah.
By right.
Right. So, so I think back to your point, is that it's not a by, you can't have them everywhere. And in fact, the process we go through currently for a special use permit would require effectively a rezoning.
Do I need to shut down mine? I, I'm, okay?
No, you're fine.
Okay, good, good. There's no more looks.
I just want to make sure that we haven't just said that, "Oh, by the way, anybody on AG-1 can operate a bed and breakfast without proper zoning, because we don't have that in place right now."
No, not in place.
Do it my way.
Finally, preservation of green spaces. Um, it does include a, um, implementation for conservation easements as a tool for permanent protection. Conservation easements are used in a lot of places. Sometimes the cities actually purchase the easements. I don't expect necessarily that we're gonna do that under this budget, or even a, a foreseeable future budget, but there are other options, uh, including trusts, uh, land trusts and, um, nature conservancies that will take care of some of that for us, but we have to be willing to partner with that, so... Number two, to encourage conservation design, again, that's something we've already mentioned. Number three, present, preparation of a green infrastructure study that determines our green assets and green opportunities. Now, this is not just parklands, but green assets, which include everything from floodplains to steep slopes. Greenprints from Trust for Public Land does one, um, that's, um, in fact, I think one of our sister cities has done one recently, using the Greens, Greenprints Program. It identifies those green assets and where we can, um, look to, um, use some of those assets, or encourage others to, to, uh, grant us easements to use some of those assets. Um, so, I think that's something that's worth looking into. Uh, we've got a lot of nice floodway property, um, and it's, a lot of it is on totally private property. Some of it's on HOA, uh, uh, HOA property, is common area. Do we use it or do we not? You know, uh, that's gonna be the decision that we'll have to make here in the near future. Number four, we partner for a greenway study, maybe even with Cherokee County. Uh, as you saw in that blue band, we've got a lot of, um, still a lot of, uh, parcels that have been spared development along that Little River corridor, and I think that's a prime opportunity for us to look for greenways opportunities with Cherokee County. And number five, to partner with Parks and Rec for a green space connectivity study. Um, and that may be via some trails, um, but it, it also may be via parkland. But again, we can't do that without looking at it, um, in a holistic manner and getting a plan together. If we can get a green space plan together, um, we can have a lot more opportunity for grant funding of those green spaces, whether, like I say, whether it be acquiring them or just developing them for trails and other things, so... Are there any questions on this slide?
Quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just on number four, with partnering on greenways, um, with Forsyth and Roswell, there just may be some additional opportunities. I know we've talked about that in other venues, but just so that it makes it perhaps to this document, if you believe that makes sense, because I think you'd see some similar trends on those other borders. Um, just another thought, um, is also, obviously, there's an existing mechanism out there for conservation use valuation, and we've talked in the past about just the need to help educate those that have larger parcels. Um, and I think that when we can lever some things that already exist through Fulton County and through the Tax Assessor's Office, that we could and should, so I, I think we've, one, with probably zero cost, could better educate some of the folks that are out there about those tools that are already available.
So, finally, um, preservation of rural character involves a broad field of expertise and cooperation in preparing a holistic plan. We can both encourage and actively support our farmlands while promoting a new agriculture in modern adaptations of our farming and equestrian uses. Implementing permanent protections on green space can ensure that these opportunities are extended for years to come. I would ask that you would go through this list the Planning Commission has provided, as well as, um, the strategies that I presented here. We are attempting to, again, um, check for consistency with your priorities, and so that's why I'm presenting this tonight, as well as asking for additional comments, um, that you might have. If you just think that we're going way off track, please let me know, um, so that we can, you know, halt production on that end immediately. And if you like the way we're going about it, um, give us some encouragement as to what you think are the highest priorities. Uh, we have, again, we've tried to, um, link those to your council retreat goals, and I think we've done okay with that, but I'd like to have a little more confirmation, so... Are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, just as it relates to the budget, um, obviously, aligning this with council, with Planning Commission, with CPAC, that additional element of budget, and, and I know that there's that effort right now to have to collaborate across all of those, but knowing that some of these priorities, or these priorities that may come out of CPAC may or may not have yet been budgeted, and Chris, this may be a question for you, or it's a combo of you and Lynn. Um, I just would hope that as we move between now and our next work session, and I realize the time is tight, but that if there are X number of items currently on a short-term work program, and only some of those have dollars associated with them, just to better understand how we're aligning priorities that may come out of CPAC and Planning Commission with kind of the budget roll-up, because I know that the budget was basically in process, of course, before some of that prioritization. So, everybody's doing a great job. I just, I see some of this stuff starting to converge and wondering if we're gonna get all of that convergence to take place in line with the budget process, or if not, how do we handle it?
Right. Um, yeah, we're doing the best we can to get it all to converge at the right time.
I know.
It's like, you know, you gotta land on the dot, and 10 people gotta land there at the same time for it to be successful, so...
That's why I don't...
Gosh, if we get all 10 on the dot, perfect. If we get six on the dot, then we have to shore up four. Um, one of the things you'll see in the budget as you look through it is, is a fairly hefty-funded contingency. We did it on purpose. We didn't try to allocate every dollar. We also don't want to hide it in, you know, I don't want to be accused of hiding funds somewhere, just that I know I'm gonna move at some other point, so, um, we're open about, about putting things in contingency, and certainly that would be one way we could go at a later, later point and have to fund something that wasn't initially funded. But I think we've seen also since the beginning of our, of our history, that, uh, it's not uncommon for priorities to change during the budget year, and the budget is a plan and a document that we, that we adhere to up until the point that it requires that we change direction. So, um, if obviously we get better information or new information, and we need to go a different way, uh, I don't think we've demonstrated that we're opposed to doing that, you know, on the, certainly in a public forum with the council's approval, but we can change and modify as we need to.
And I'm, again, I applaud all the effort, and I'm just suggesting that to Lynn, because you, you probably have the most projects that may or may not have yet been, in looking at different things, that may not have yet made it to a budgeted line item, then there's not those contingencies out there. And so, I would just encourage Lynn, as I suspect you would anyway, if you're asking for encouragement, I would encourage you, as you go through this week with CPAC and Planning Commission, knowing that we've got that work session next Monday, that if there's some things that either are not yet allocated, or that haven't yet been prioritized, but suddenly out of Wednesday night get prioritized, that we get the benefit of that discussion for next Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Got one other, uh, staff report just to give you. You're, that was it, right, Lynn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm moving on. Um, one of the staff reports, just to, I think I mentioned that we're having one next week again, um, as I reminded you all last week, it is a lot easier for us to thoroughly address your questions with respect to the budget ahead of time. We'll do the best we can on the fly at the workshop, but it's since last week's meeting, um, you all are in good company with each other, because I haven't received a comment from anybody at this point. So, if you have any that are stewing and just getting ready to get them to us, um, if you want us to have them thoroughly addressed by next Monday, a couple of days would be preferable.
And I do have some to send to you.
Great.
One last question to Lynn. In your priority list over here, you have priority one, then two and three, then five and six. There's four.
Let me, let me clarify that just a minute, because they're not in priority order. Those numbers are simply to help us to identify the projects, because they had 13 projects that they wanted to do. But those are not necessarily in priority order. What we have attempted to do is where they, as you can see the diamonds?
Mm-hmm.
Those diamonds line up with your priorities from your council retreat. If you'll notice on that, uh, graph, it talks about Parks and Recreation Planning is priority number one, Innovative Zoning is priorities two and three, Business and Equestrian Friendly Policies, priority five and six. We attempted to put at the top of the page, or at the top of this chart, those things that matched up with the most diamonds, that had the most, um, relationship to your other priorities. So, we're starting there, and then we're trying to, uh, again, understanding that some of these projects are gonna take nine months, some will take three, some might take six, some will take much longer. Uh, we've tried to then assign them a timeframe based on that.
Okay. There's no more questions? Is that all staff reports, Chris?
It is, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, what I request for our next executive session, if you all are okay with it, um, is to just check with our attorney, we can do this, that we can just go not live here in this room. Obviously, we don't have anybody in the audience, everybody can go grab something to eat. We'll just come back in here and have our executive session where we can spread out a little bit more.
And just turn it off?
And we'll just turn off. Yes, we'll, we'll go into executive session mode, but we're okay to do it here.
Okay. All right, so, I need a motion and...
Mayor, I move, we move to executive session.
And for discussion, uh...
This one is going to be, uh, pending litigation, potential litigation, land acquisition, and personnel.
For litigation, pending litigation, uh, personnel and land acquisition.
Could you change it, well?